Olea chulena nganale, fa taimale fa ma loe. Ile vaingale media, ya tu saifu i'male we inga matangu fiye. Cha'i lofi na ngalo, ilo'tu fa ta'va'a, ya uafu ile we ingo le tu'a. Ta'ono fa moi moe ya, ve iano ulio fa ta'va'a e faima. Fungo ale komicho le fa talai nga, ya sungo ile ta'tu su'i de ta'i manu'e ulua. Tainanu fa'ltu ya esitosu, ya fa pe'fu ile sungo'ltu iina ya le tu'a. Ya va'i i'lo ulio e, muli muli to'i lianganga, fa talofa malfa fe'lo'a. Ya ile ne'i tu'la'ale fiafi. Ya imo'ala fa'fe'lo'a ianga ile, fa talofa le sungo'ile. Fa fe'nganga, talofa pasta, ma'lole saifu ma'lole fula'ule ne'i ne'asu. Ile ngatai fu'ile'a ya le, le fa'ltu'a. Nukapeta ma'lole saifu malangema, tainanu fa'ltu no'fu'a. Ngat fu'ile'a ya, fa talofa fo'i ile, pa'i'ale silasio le kalesia, sungo'ltai ta'i. Ya mesi fo'i'ole so'ata'u, fa'ltu'a, fa singa'tu iina, fa'ltu'a. Fa talofa yate o'tou'uma lava, mesio na yo'tato'uma tu'oma'tu'a. Ya singa'ki'a konu yonavai nga'lu'a. Ya se'yo'ula va'ile ma'lo'sio le kalesia, le amta'levau. Tainanu fa'iya nai fa'nanu, tina'a, ya fa ma'lole fula'ul. Ta'ltonu lava sa'oto'uma'u ashe, asu ma'tangu fiema'la fe'fia. Ya ne'asu, ve i'el si'fa fa manma'lo'ye su'ke'wiso. Ya uti fa pe'atu'a ile ne'tu'la'ale fiafi, talofa talofa lava. Ya ukoama yutu. Sa'i fe'fia ne'asu, sa'i fa'lo'noa. Ya pesa'iti nga'ina fo'i, te'au ma'lo'wenga malava singa ne'asu. Ya a'ha ta'tu fa'na'u, sa'le layla o'onga, pesa'i fe'fia'ale taloma, kurana la'va si'me sa'i fa'i. Ya fo'i'ali we i'anga ile tu'a. Uanava va'anga ma, tiu ti'fa'i ta'tu, te'anga ya'i ne'asu male asu. Au fu'li no'va'a ya'i'ole lo'fa'le tu'. E'ua'tato'fe'lo'a ya imanu'ya, ya ta'tu fa'fu ile we i'anga ile tu'a. A'le, tufi fe'vi fa'asu'atule ma'ule ali fe'ta'tu talu. A'mele'i, le ma'ule'ale, talale, ale, ale potosormona, ole fa'ta'oto'ole'a e. Sunga lima, lo'fanku sunga lima. O'asu'uma'ole u'ti nga'ina, ualeanga'ia, a'ole lotu fe'fia. Ole ta'usamii nga'ile a'ulua. Embo'ole ni'fa'pa'pa'pa'. A'le me'ole ta'nganga ta'fe'fia, na'te'moga le ta'tu fe'fia. Ya, olui nga'la'ale fe'fia'ale'olo au ma'ye i'ele potosormona. A'mele'ole ta'nganga ta'usi ta'i, ya ma'ta'makna'ula, unui nga'la. E'la marisi fisili'ale'ana fe'abat? A'la fa'la ta'tou'ou, ou, ou ta'nganga ta'usi ta'ei ma'pupoto, ya usi ta'iletu. Ole a'la, fa'ja'otai'atu'a ile tu'. Fa ma'fana'i, e, e ma'fana'i le temini ualila ta'tu sa'uni ta'tu te'ma'futa'le. Na'asi se'va'ongu'le'ale, e ma'fa'i'ale yonavavi'ole ma'fana'ale mafta. Olitata'lo' a', te'ilo'ala va'anga va'avi'ala'ala na'ya ta'tu. Shota'itu'a ile tu' male nganapali. Ya olitata'lo' a', pe'ole sa'uma'ye i'ele, le sanamore'a e. Selantou'ulivo, ya lo'ka'pa'utou'uma'lu fa'le tu'a e, ye, ye su'su'ema'ya te'au. Ma'e e si'la fe'lo'lotu, tu'fatu, ma'ya e si'la fe'fo'i, ya te'au. Se'ala e tingai, ma'e ta'ita'ina ma'ya'au, ile'ala. Ole sa'anga ba'ali, amen. Ya ta'tu te'ma'futa'pe' male tu'a, ya'su'uma, ma'su'uma. Se'yo'utu fa'va'au, ya uta'tonu, ya le'ala uvalawatu'atulu ta'tu te'ita'i malanga'fa'la'ul fa'lo'le. Ya si'ta'tu ta'lo'e ta'tu te'ama ta'ia'na, ta'tu fa'ansole'ale'ale malanga'fa'lo'ul. Ta'tu tifoma, mula'lo' male tu' ta'lo. Ve'i'ala va'oe'lo ma'tu va'tu'a. Ilou'ala'ofa malou'anga le ne'i ma'fa'i'ono ma'tu to'edisila'fa'i. Ilunga'ala ma'tou sunga, mesio'ala ma'tou maftanga'ale ne'afiafi. Ma'tou fa'ftaya wasa fe'anga'i'ale a'ina kalesia, ma tiu te'afe'au ma'nga'wenga. Fe'ngale fa'na'u ma'onga. Marisi fo'i'ne'ale malu'oma'tou'fale, tiu te'fo'i tonu a'ina. Fa'ftaitele ilou'ala'ofa. E'ua ma'tou to'yo mai fa'tasi ma'tou te'watu'uma'ala wa'fi'oe'ala le ma'tou maftanga'ale ne'afiafi. A'mata'inala ma'tou, a'maftanga ta'ta'lo, ma'tu taksia'ale yangso'aswa'ame'ale nganga pa'ia. Se'temi ma'tou si'asu'as, se'temi ma'tou fa'itau'ala wa'fi'anga. Ma'tou mana'umia'ale nganga e ta'ita'i ma'tou. Ina'ia ma'tou ma'alam'a, pesi'ala'ufi na ngalo mo'i ma'tou le ne'afiafi. Fa manu'ya'ala ma'tou maftanga, fa manu'ya'fo'i nisi'wale mai. Fa manu'ya'ale au'ufi so'lo' fe'ngai ma ta'ita'ia'ala ma'tou por'kalamine. I'ea'ao'ya su'ona lo'fu'a fa'ma'tou wale mai. Amen.
So, thank you so much for joining, really appreciate it, hope you guys are well. So, today we're actually looking at the study of the law. So, we've got this study, one on Friday and two on Sabbath. So, just pray that God will continue to bless and guide us. Otherwise, also, thank you for letting us know. So, here's one of the really good studies for tonight. And when we look at the law, it's probably one of the most important blessings that God has given to us because he's given us instructions that we can follow. Here's the, we've got sections here. The first one is, we are saved apart from the law or we are saved not from the law. And the first verse that comes to our study this evening is Ephesians chapter 2 verse 8 to 10. Let's, let's look at this verse. So Ephesians, Ephesians chapter 2, 8 to 10. Can someone read that for us, please? Awesome, thank you.
Ephesians chapter 2 verse 8 to 10. I mean that you have been saved by grace because you believe, you did not save yourselves. It was a gift from God. You cannot boast that you are saved by the work you have, you have done. God has made us what we are in cross Jesus. God made us new people so that we would do good works. God had planned in advance those good works for us. He had planned for us to live our lives through them. We are saved by an act of grace, good works, contribute nothing, nothing to what Jesus was. We are not saved by good, but we have been saved for good works.
Okay, so give us your kind of understanding. Obviously, the, the answer is there, but how can we kind of explain it in our own words?
I personally think this, this, yes. I mean, 8 says that we've been saved by God's grace and we did not save ourselves. So, we shouldn't boast, we shouldn't boast then for ourselves higher than God. Because God saved us and saved our own. This is another way we could keep His presence or also giving Him thanks for saving us. And, yeah.
Well done. So, we have right in our hands the Bible. And in the Bible, it has also the Ten Commandments. But it says here specifically that the law does not really save us, but what really saves us?
An act of grace.
Right, okay, well done. So, when we, when we say an act of grace, this means that God loves us unconditionally. And what that means is that before we were even born or before we even existed, God loved us with His grace. And grace actually means grace receives, accepts and cleanses every single person. That's what it means. So, maybe the question for us now, then if we've kind of understood now that it is by grace we have been saved, so what's the point of the law? Okay, so let's have a look. So, thank you so much. So, God's law is perfect. Let's have a look at this. Psalms 19 verse 7. Can someone read that, thank you, yep?
Yeah, so what it says is that, "Instructions of the Lord are perfect, reviving the soul. The decrees of the Lord are trustworthy, making wise the simple." So, what I think this is talking about is that law is very simple and it can change, can change the soul of people, how the way they live, the way they think and their influence. So, yeah, that's what I think this verse means. And what I also think it means is that it is, the commandments that God has given us are righteous and trustworthy. So, there's, there's nothing to worry about.
Well done. There's another word that it's in the study for tonight. It says here that God's law is what? Perfect. So, if it's perfect, that means that what? It can't be changed because it's already perfect. And I like the way that you said it's, the law's quite simple and it's not complicated because we are the ones that make it complicated. And all we have to do is to obey God's law because God wants us to follow Him and follow His instructions. So, one thing that we know that God's law is perfect and it can't be improved by anything else. Let's look at another verse here. Romans 7, verse 12. And someone's found that you can read it up for us?
Romans 7 verse 12. "So then the law is holy and the commandment is holy, righteous and good."
Awesome. So then the law is holy and the commandment is holy, righteous and good. And so it says here, the Ten Commandments, not only is perfect, but also it is holy and it's righteous, okay? So now we've kind of discovered that the commandments that God has given to us, it can't be changed, it can't be complicated. It is perfect and it's righteous. Let's look at one more verse, which is the same book. It's Romans 3 verse 20.
Because no one can be made right with God by following the law. The law ensures ourselves.
Wow, okay, now we're getting somewhere. So, this is interesting now. So therefore, no one will be what declared righteous in God's sight by the works of the, what? Of the law, okay? Rather, through the law, we become conscious of sin. So, in a nutshell, what does that mean to us? What is it saying in regards for us?
It's the thing that, without the law, we wouldn't know what sin is.
Excellent.
It's like, if we do something wrong, for example, if you murder someone, you'll think back to the law, the commandment said, "Do not kill." And that shows us our sin. And you.
Well done. So, I want you to think about this. God gave the law to Moses. Now, if we look at the timeframe, it's about maybe three, maybe 3,000 years? Maybe even longer than that? So, those laws that you just mentioned, thou should not kill, still stands today. Can you believe that? What's the other law that we know of? Some of the ones. Thou shall not steal. So, it's a law that still remains to this very day. So, the pillars of society, of governments, still hold to these laws here. Thou should not kill, thou should not steal, thou should not kill, but adultery, you know? Because that's against, you know, the law of God and no one can actually change that. Maybe some governments have actually changed it because of man-made rules, but we know that these laws that God has given to us still applies to us today. That's incredible. Who would have thought that? And so, I love how you said, Jaber said, "We wouldn't know what sin is if the law didn't exist." And so this was such an important part, when Moses got the law, the people continuously sinned. And then when they saw the law, they realized, wow, we didn't even know we were doing this. And then they realized, okay, let's be obedient to God. Let's be obedient to the laws. But remember that the law doesn't what? Doesn't save us. It is an act of grace, which is God's unconditional favor, which means God loves us. And I'm going to be very careful. God loves us regardless of what we do. And when I say that, I say it in a way that we have to be very mindful what we do because, you know, God doesn't like sin. And that's important for us to not take advantage of that grace. Awesome. Any questions, any thoughts? Anything that kind of stands out for you?
Hey Pastor, I'll just jump in there. Is that's okay?
Absolutely, also.
Eka'ole, buka'upule ta'tu fa'so'ale ne'i. Oma'ole okukalango'fo'ile'ale le tu'la'funu. As well as the grace of God. Now, ole, ole va'ingala uti fe'fo'ile'ale fa'ma'fa'ile'ale le'somkaku. Ona'ole okukalango'le ku'la'funu. Ona'ale itele'ole ome'fo'i'ale e, a'fisile'le ku'la'funu, in the grace of God. Itele'anga esee kakou, a', esee kakou kalikou'unga ma'isi ekalesia po'osi Christian faithlekouwa le kalikou'le Jesu. E, olui nga'ala okala. Onga'ua fa'ima'ia'ale te'tu o'tele'ia'ale kalikou'ile tu'la'funu. Fa'ima'ideos, ole'lo'ole koe'anga. The law is not valid anymore and it's through the grace of God, olimaliu Jesu. Uafa'ula'anga ikako. Now, the topic, esee le, le ma'makfa'pa'asau'ile kalangole ku'la'funu. Pa'efeku kalangol'pula'anga'leku. Ole, pula'sapaki. Which is one of, a', ka'upu, ma'mafanga'ala'ou ka'ou ma'ikou'la'funu. Pa'efeku la'funu le kalangou'ale. Ya, ya, ona'ale itele'anga fe'ma'isi le ta'tu ile, ile vule'akaku. Ole, uale koe'fa'anga'anga ku'la'funu le'ya'ia ome'ku'ale. Ya olufa'ole'ufa'i'ale grace of God. Ole'ue'ika'kou ke'mi'ni'ei. So, a'pe'ole me'anga'fo'ile fa'ma'fa'ifu'ile'ale ya'la'ou. A'lova'a'i ile va'anga'okalangou'ale. O'ishiu fa'pe'anga po'o discussions here, ye ma'sa'inga come up because of this topic, the grace of God and the tu'la'funu, the law.
Thank you, also, you brought up a very good point, which actually we move into the next section, which is very important for us to go through because, as Arthur said, a lot of people misinterpret the Bible in regards to whether the law still applies. So, let's have a look. It says here in the next section here, "Was the law done away with?" Okay, let's have a look. So, Matthew chapter 5 verse 17 to 19.
"Jesus never intended to do away with the law. Heaven and earth would vanish first. Do not think that I have not, I have come to abolish the law or the prophets. I have not come to abolish them, but to fulfill them. Surely I tell you, until heaven and earth disappear, not the smallest letter, not the least stroke of a pen, will by any means disappear from the law until everything is accomplished. Therefore, anyone who sets aside one of the least of these commands and teaches others accordingly will be called least in the kingdom of heaven. But whoever practices and teaches these commands will be called great in the kingdom of heaven."
Okay. That's a very, very straightforward text. Thank you for reading it. It tells us specifically that Jesus never intended to do away with the law. Heaven and earth would vanish first, okay? So, like Arthur said, we have to be very, very careful how we interpret what the Bible says. But here is a clear passage where Jesus actually says that, "I did not come here to abolish the law." But what did he come to do?
To fulfill them.
Fulfill it, okay? And one of the reasons why he actually said this is because a lot of people misuse the law. They use it for their own advantage. And so this is one of the most important parts about the law still remains. And the reason why it still remains is because he says heaven. He says here, heaven and earth would vanish what? First. Which is very, very interesting. Because God's law, what he says, it stands. Remember, when Jesus speaks, things exist. The heavens and the earth exist, okay? And so when he says in regard to destroying the earth because of sin, that could happen instantly. Well, let's look at another verse here. Romans 3 verse 31. Romans 3, 31.
Well then, if we emphasize faith, does this mean that we can forget about the law? Of course not. In fact, only when we have faith do we truly fulfill the law.
So, there you go. That answers the question very, very well. It is hard to find a clearer verse on a Christian's responsibility that we what? We uphold the law. And so it's very important for us to uphold God's law. Now, as I mentioned before, what happens if we actually run a red light? We either see a flashing camera or the police will stop us. And so we actually have to uphold the law of the land, okay? Yes, we may probably get away with one red light or two red lights and no one sees us, but who actually sees us? God sees everything. And so, we as Christians, we have a higher standard of responsibility. And that responsibility is to uphold God's law. Here's another verse here, and still in Romans, so Romans chapter 6, 14 and 16.
For all sin should no longer be your master, because you are not under the law but under grace. And shall we sin because we are not under the law but under grace? By no means. Don't you know that when you offer yourselves to someone as obedient slaves, you are slaves of the one who obe? Whether you are slaves to sin, which leads to death, or to obedience, which leads to righteousness.
Okay, this one here is a bit of an interesting passage here, but I want us to look at the statement. The statement says, "God has removed the condemnation of the law through the death of His Son, Jesus Christ." And he says here, "We no longer live in slavery to sin, but as slaves to righteousness, which means that we serve God none." And so, we've kind of looked at, the law doesn't really save us and the law doesn't really condemn us anymore. And why is that? Because Jesus died for us. As we mentioned in the last couple of verses, that Jesus came to fulfill the law. He didn't come to abolish the law. And so he came with the correct interpretation, but also he came to practice what it means. Now, let me ask you a question. Did Jesus ever break any of the laws?
No.
No. It's pretty easy to understand. He didn't break any of the laws at all. In fact, he actually gave the law, okay? So, which means he is even greater than the law. And so Jesus comes to fulfill the law and also Jesus was perfect obedience to the law. And the reason why he was, he was perfect is because his own sacrifice was on the cross. And so he was obedient to even death on the cross. Any questions before we continue, before we move on? Just want to probably just pause here so we can kind of digest what these verses are talking about, but if anyone else has any thoughts?
I don't have a question Pastor, but just thinking back to the verses we've been reading and what we've been discussing. It seems like the law or like the way that we upkeep, that we keep the law, that is sort of our test, it's a testament of our faith. So, if we say that we have faith in God and that we believe in Jesus, but we don't keep the law, then our faith or our word is useless because like Romans 3:31 says that you.
Awesome.
So, it's like the law is sort of keeping us accountable for our faith. Because you can't say, e, ngaki kalikou'le'akuama'aki alofa'le'aku pa'ekeli kango'ka'usia'anga polo'ingama. So, yeah, that for me is, the law doesn't save us, but it definitely keeps us accountable. And it's, it can show people, especially people who are not Christians, that, yes, we really do believe this because I think sometimes as Christians we get judged or people say, oh, well, why do you say you're a Christian, but you know, you say these things or you're not a good person?
Yeah.
And I think us keeping the law, that is a testament, that's our testimony, that we are saved. And that is the thing that people see before we even say, or like introduce ourselves. So, yeah.
Awesome, love it. Thank you so much for sharing, really, really appreciate that. Any other thoughts, any other comments?
Yep, I'm just going off what Kim was saying.
Yeah.
I was just reading the verse. I was actually like going through the bottom of it and in Romans 6 verse 21, it says, "What benefit did you reap at that time from the things you are now ashamed of?" And it, those things result in death. It just goes back to what Kim was saying, that even though like, we know the law, we know what is right, what is wrong. I mean, yeah, what is wrong, we just tend to.
we know the law, we know what is right, what is wrong. I mean, yeah, what is wrong, we just tend to, we tend to choose what we want. Um. Yeah. Yeah, honey. I lost the other verse that I was going to relate it to.
It's okay. No, I like the verse that you just mentioned in regards to um, what benefit did you reap at that time from the things you are now ashamed of? Those things result in death.
Yeah, um, it's like us humans, like we tend to enjoy um, the stuff that we, we like to do. We tend to like to go out and like party and be of like what's trending, like do the stuff that are trending now. But those things, as said before, those things stay with like the earth. Um, those are earthly things. It, it leads to death. It doesn't like give you eternal life. Um, the goal that we're um, aiming for. Yeah.
Well done. No, fantastic. I think as mentioned before, uh, the purpose of the law also is to what? Is to show us our that's information. So it's to remind us uh, the, our conscience, to be conscious of what, what we do. And also is to help us um, to make sure that we be obedient to God's instructions and God's promises. And so we don't miss out on those blessings that he gives to us. Okay, we'll continue. Thank you so much for sharing. So uh, let's look at also uh, first Corinthians chapter seven verse nineteen. So the apostle Paul makes a distinction between ceremonial law and the commandments of God and God's command is what counts. Okay, so first uh, Corinthians. I should um, whoever finds it firstly, if they can read it out, it'd be awesome.
Second decision is nothing and unsecond decision is nothing. Keeping God's command is what counts.
Okay. Let's kind of just pause there. What is that saying and what is circumcision? Okay. So uh, the verse actually says here in Romans chapter seven verse nineteen, circumcision is nothing and uncircumcision is nothing. Okay. So basically, this was a practice that uh, the Jews um, did and that basically was a sign of them being um, set apart as God's people. And so if you weren't uh, circumcised, which means that you weren't part of God's people. And so that, well, that was a practice that was done. Then it says here, circumcision is nothing and uncircumcision is nothing. So it doesn't really matter whether you're what? Circumcised or you're not circumcised. But keeping God's commands is what counts. That's really important to understand. And so when we actually look at um, in regards to how uh, we are saved, we are saved by God's what? God's grace. We're not saved by anything else in regards to the law, but the law helps us to understand what God's purpose is for us. Any, any thoughts on this um, on this this? Okay, um, maybe I can get uh, yeah, the boys, Brian, if you guys can um, do number nine for us, please.
And uh, this means that God holy people must do a persecution patiently, obeying his commands and maintaining their faith in Jesus.
Yeah, so do you wanna read, um, was it the Revelation fourteen twelve?
Yeah.
Yeah, and let's see, just read the statement.
Um, it says that the last test over the mark of the beast will not overcome those who keeps God's commandments and remain faithful to Jesus. So basically what is saying is that when the spirit of the Antichrist um, comes in a physical form, um, he will um, he will tell those to um, tell the people this I had stuff like food and like other needs that people need to survive with. Is that um, they would need to have a mark, but those who remain faithful to God and um, and keep his commandments and remain faithful to their belief, to um, to beliefs we hold that Jesus is real and he is coming to um, judge the world. They will not be overcome by this temptation as the commandments, even, even though there are things that may fear because we are human, like persecution. Um, God said the temptation will not be, he will not make the temptation. Um, there's nothing. Yeah, you can't take so. So yeah, that's what it.
That's awesome. Yeah. So one, one thing that we know for sure is uh, towards for one patience. The other thing is endurance. Um, and also it says here, um, those who are remain faithful and keep God's commandments. So there's a couple of key words that tells us that if we remain patient or if we remain um, faithful, if we have endurance and when we uh, follow God's commandments, these are the faithful people that God is looking for. And this is such a blessing for us to know this because a lot of people, um, they pretty much missed some of the key things for us to do. And that is making sure that we have patience and endurance and that we follow God's commandments and that we remain faithful to the very end and God will reward us. And that reward is a crown in heaven. And I, I, I look forward to that day when Jesus comes again, that we will remain um, faithful to him to the very end. Awesome. Well done. Um, anybody would like to do number ten?
So I just wanna add on to number nine before we move on.
Go for it. Yeah.
I think another another important thing that we need to keep in mind is consistency.
Awesome.
Only because we can't, we can't just turn to God for one day and then and they're all, okay, I have eternal life. My name's on the books for eternal life. Um, I feel like you need to be consistent and patient in your walk with God and in your journey. Um. Because there are a lot of temptations, especially now, um, especially when the world is like corrupt. I was, I would say the world, the world is, it's like there's problems from left, right and center.
Hmm.
You know, it just takes self-discipline, um, consistency and patience in order for you to like separate yourself from the worldly temptations and stuff.
Hmm. Well done. Fantastic. That's a, that's a great um, um, encouragement for us to have consistency, which is pretty much the same thing as um, perseverance. Just keep, keep, keep going. Hmm. Keep going, consistent in our walk of God. Awesome. Okay. Anybody like to do number ten?
Um, yep.
Awesome.
So he was eight verse ten reads, in the future I'll make this agreement with the people of these earth, with the Lord. I'll call my teachings in their mind. And I will write them on their hearts. I'll be their God and they will be my people. Um, in the book, under the new covenant, the law is to be written on our hearts.
Well done.
Yes, so what I've got from this is that um, the law should be written in our hearts, meaning we should always remember the law. Um, keep it in mind everywhere we go. Uh, whatever saying we do, whatever we um, uh, wherever we die, um, make sure we remember the law. Um, because you can also help us when we sin. Um, we'll know, we'll remember the law. Oh, when I like do this, then we change.
Well done. Now, you brought up a good point is that I will put my laws in their minds and write them in our way, in our hearts. Now imagine when the end of days come, um, people will actually take away our bibles. Okay. And so we have to try and remember the, the law of God. Now, I don't know if you guys remember, there was a um, a movie back in the yeah, a while back, but it was the, the, it was called Eli. Uh, it was starring Denzel Washington. Um, and basically what they were trying to do, they were trying to kill Denzel Washington because he had the Bible. And uh, and the reason why they were trying to kill him is because the Bible had knowledge and it had the truth. And people were trying to kill him and so forth, but it was very, very uh, what we see today is that a lot of people, um, when they have the word of God, they have the truth and they have knowledge, but also they have wisdom. And that's one of the things at the end times that we have to remember that we, we have the word of God in our hearts. And also we have the word of God in our minds as well. So well done. Okay, who would like to do number eleven?
I'll do it.
Thank you. Hmm.
Um, so number eleven is verse John's two, verse three to four.
Mm hmm.
And it says, and we can be sure that we know if we obey his commandments. If someone claims, I know God, but doesn't obey God's commandments, that person is a liar and is not living in the truth. So it just is sort of what I was saying before that um, you can't claim that you have faith in God and that you love God if you don't follow his commandments. Um, because your greatest testament are your actions. You know, like they say, your actions speak louder than words.
Yep.
It doesn't matter if you say your words are void and useless. So, um, we really need to follow God's commandments because it says here that we are liars if we don't and we're not living in the truth.
Awesome. Well done. Appreciate that. We, we see that it's so important that we kind of um, be followers of Jesus and also practice what he says. And this is a really good statement. It says here, anyone living in defiance to God's command does not truly know God. And so it, it's so important that we continue to trust in God and also to ask him to help us with the challenges that we go through in life because every single person living in this world or has lived in this world always fall short of the glory of God because there's a, a standard and the standards always go up and down. But God's principle doesn't change. And that principle also tells us that his grace is sufficient for us and he loves us unconditionally. So thank you for that. Um, so the last one is twelve. Who would like to finish this one off? Great.
We know we love God's children if we love God and obey his commandments. Loving God means keeping his commandments. His commandments are not so burdensome. So, so what it says here is that the, the greatest expression of love we can show God is through obedience. So obeying God is the most important thing you can do. And that God has given us commandments to obey. And just like um, just like Pastor Panapa said, that the commandments are not, are simple. We just make it really hard to follow because there's many like temptations and things that um, get in the way of of obeying these commands. Like our feelings, um, things that we do, things that we say can affect our way and our um, definition of obedience. So yeah, that's what I learned.
Well done. You, you touched on a good point. I mean, what is our definition of obedience? So when we look at the word obedience, um, we look at also from the perspective of when Jesus came to the surface as a child, he was obedient to his mom and dad. You know, his earthly parents. And also he was obedient to his heavenly father. Hmm. And so if Jesus could actually do this, which means he was human, just like us, we can do it as well. And as, as uh, you know, you've mentioned that sometimes we also make it complicated ourselves. And at the end, we kind of yeah, we suffer the consequences for being the opposite disobedient as well. So as we kind of close our study for today, I want us to um, remind each other that we are saved not from the law, but we're saved from God's grace. Praise God for that. So we are saved through his grace and remembering as well that God's law is perfect. No one can actually change God's law. And the third section talks about as well that um, was the law done away with? The answer is no. It was not done away with. But God came, Jesus came to this earth to fulfill it. And when he fulfilled it, he fulfilled it even to the point of being obedient to death. And that is um, the amazing gift that God has given to us, has given to his son, Jesus Christ, to fulfill the law. And that we can actually um, live for him and we can give our lives to him, knowing that this life that we have is a gift from God. Any thoughts before we close? No? Okay. Well, thank you very much for contributing to our study tonight. I hope that um, the studies have been a, a blessing, but also uh, kind of helps us to understand more and more about the different things that God is telling us in the Bible. Uh, and also having the right interpretation of what the Bible says on, on these topics as well. So thank you so much. May God bless you and we'll uh, head back to the main room. Yeah.
The two alone, my two to map a yai, my phone a taloi. Oh, oh, you're the two a si si di, the two alo. In a way to allow my to fatass, my to ainga kalisiap, you know, my son yai. More the two alone, my to a nganor fa manu, my fa ni tangai la wafiyo. Five taichere lava to ma niyasu. Sa fei ngai lo nu. I'm a tiuti pe, you know, my son yai.
Amen.